Calling the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen in Kent, Connecticut for July 24th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. All right, please stand by the pledge allegiance. We have a whole and join in. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, our nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all. Okay. Any amendments to the agenda, I have just one. For the quarterly social service report, we put in correspondence, so I'm kicking out the correspondence, I want to put in the new business, but kick it back up right after we're done with. She will be on a little bit to answer any questions, so it's a good report, but just in case, I actually should be joining soon here. That's all I had for agenda, so. Anybody else have any agenda changes or anything?
I'm okay.
Now, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to move the 5-2 April-June 2024 quarterly social service report to new business, but move it up right after approval of minutes.
So, did you move it?
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. Any discussion? All that, all favor? So, approve the amended agenda, a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We just moved to, okay, all in favor?
I'm sorry, sorry.
I told you, you're right, you know, we've amended the agenda, we're approving the amended agenda, we have our discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we get to the rates, okay. Any, number four minutes, any questions, any amendments, I did have one. On 4-3, June 26th, on the second page, there's the third page, under performance objectives, approval of documents, it says employees can go back to pre-COVID January 20th with an end date of 9/1/2020, it should be 9/30/2020, beginning from last days, that's the July, oh, so just amended to that, so.
Um.
Yes, questions?
I have a couple. The, on the, on the 26th, the last line talks says we, we lost power, we actually lost energy, not power, we had power.
True.
And just, not that it's that big a deal, but the June 18th meeting that's listed on our agenda is actually the higher-end committee.
Oh, that's good, okay, that's good, it's hard to listen to. Yeah, I looked at that too. Okay. Any other changes or amendments? Question, wording of any of the minutes, then I'll accept the motion to approve minutes of the, as amended, from the June 18th, 2024, June 20th, 24, June 26th, 2024, July 1st, 2024, and July 3rd, that should be change of 2020, there you go. Really like that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, great, make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, um, I don't, it's, uh. Yeah, you saw Rosemary, Samantha on the handle?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay. All right, Sam, um. Anybody have a chance, everybody had, hopefully had a chance or at least looked at it. The real nice report again, we really appreciate the quarterly report, a lot going on. A couple of things I wanted to highlight, and Sam, you can jump in anytime if you want to discuss it. Her general updates were, did a lot of work, they're doing a lot of work with different organizations and so on, and different things that they do with the camps and and some of the baby programs, but in the food bank, the new agreement made between the department and the CT Food Share, which makes the food bank capable of receiving T-Fat products, which I can't remember what T-Fat is, I wrote it down, I said on my computer, but I understand that it does allow us to access more fresh fruits, meats and so on, which is really good and obviously helps with the limited products and forming. Do you, the question I did have, Sam, I didn't even get a chance to ask you that before when we talked about this, is do you have enough refrigeration capability for this, or really need to be some changes?
So, right now, we're in pretty good shape, especially with refrigeration, and we do have two fairly large freezers inside the shopping area of the food bank, and then we have a chest freezer in, in like a separate storage closet, so we, we are in really good shape, and we, I do order the refrigerated as well as frozen items, dependent upon what space we have available, and how much, you know, how much stock we have of everything. So that I don't foresee being an issue at all. And the nice part is the, the T-Fap does allow us to offer those items to anybody as long as they're a Connecticut state resident, which is really actually a great opportunity, so when somebody comes in and, and they're not, you know, let's say from the town of Kent, but they still need food, we can offer them T-Fap food instead of either turning them away, which we was, was not really something that we ever did, but we just said, you know, you can't come on a regular basis, it's meant for Kent residents, but the T-Fap food allows us to say to them, you can come, and as long as we have T-Fap food items, we'll be able to provide you with those, because they, the the specific T-Fap items are meant for any Connecticut resident.
What does the acronym mean, Samantha?
I honestly don't know, I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
Is it?
I got it, it's the Emergency Food Assistance Program.
Okay, yes, that's right.
USDA.
Thank you, Samantha, does that mean it's state money or federal money funded through the state?
So, we had to, Connecticut Food Share applied for us on our behalf to the Department of Social Services, so the Department of Social Services is the one who oversees the program, and they're the ones who have the funding for this, you know, these food items, and they give us a forecast of what we're going to be able to order each month, so I can kind of plan ahead and see what, what stuff we need, but they do have, as Marty had mentioned, frozen foods as well as some fresh fruits, vegetables, I can access milk, and then there's other canned, you know, shelf-stable items that we're able to get that we couldn't get before.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
It's fantastic, we actually, well, we're getting our first order that includes T-Fap food this, this week, so we'll get our first order tomorrow, and we actually already have somebody who's, who's called ahead and will be utilizing our, our T-Fap food, and so it'll be a nice kind of ease into figuring out exactly what we need to, what we need to do, and we've had most of our participants register for the T-Fap program already, it was just a verbal attestation that they're Connecticut state residents and that, dependent upon their household size, that their income falls within the range. So, we're, we're actually in really, really good shape to get that food out there for Friday.
If anyone has any questions, there's a, there's a program fact sheets on the USDA.gov here about this program, so I was just reading, reading it.
So, clearly, federal money coming to the state. If it's USDA.
Right. Yeah. And obviously they have a whole bunch of other, you can see in the, in the bank, some other training requirements, this one, which is really good, and they've been ramped up. Actually, I tried to get Sam to talk about it last month, it just came in, we were coming into, like, the day of our meetings in June, but I've seen on the training to, you know, by the way, so we. Okay, so she had more information, actually, it's in the report. Okay. I don't have any more questions, anyone else or comments?
Well, I have a comment. The, um, I've had a number of people talk to me about the food bank hours, there's concern that that they're most likely are people that work and that are food insecure and they can't make it on Fridays from 10 to noon. So, the Republican, the Democratic Town Committee has actually been talking about this issue because they're very concerned about it, and we came up with an idea that we would love to try and have volunteers man it on Saturdays and rotate it through different groups, like have the Democrats do it one week on a Saturday, next week have it be the, maybe the Lions Club, maybe next the Republican Town Committee, and, and then do it like a trial basis for maybe three months and see how many people come through, and is, is it something that.
Could be problematic of rentals.
With what?
With rentals of this space, having the food bank open when there's somebody setting up for a wedding and they have food, you know, being brought in into the kitchen in that area. Potentially it could, and the confidentiality issue of having, you know, food bank people come if we have maybe a local family on a wedding or.
How early do most rentals start?
It depends if it's a wedding, they may have somebody coming in earlier to start cooking, preparing their food or doing final setup, so it all depends on the type of event, how early they go in, but generally, I'd say, you know, between 9:00 and noon, you know, to set up would be the time if they haven't finished from, you know, the Friday night before.
I can also. Maybe it's the way around that.
Yes. Sam, did you have a comment?
Yeah, so I was just gonna say, we do offer home delivery, and in the time that I've been here, I have not come across somebody who was not able to make it due to work, and we do advertise as soon as somebody says to us that they're not able to come in for whatever reason, we do offer home delivery, so we, we do have, we do have a, I think it's two, two households that are working, and then there's a, you know, somebody else who's at home, who is just not able to physically get to the food bank. So we definitely offer an option for people if they are working. And I would just be concerned, because we do, especially with the T-Fap program, we definitely have to be really careful with our data now, and so I would be a little nervous with volunteers doing the registration, because Rosemary and I, we've, we've worked really, really hard on trying to make sure that that's as accurate, you know, as humanly possible, but I do want to at least let people know, we, we absolutely offer delivery if somebody cannot make it to the food bank if they're working, it's not that they're turned away by no means.
But if they're working, they're working, so they're not going to be home to take the delivery. How would that work?
So we've had people who, who will leave coolers out, if they're comfortable doing that, they are able to leave a cooler out, and we can still provide them with the frozen items. Or alternatively, some of them decide that they, you know, they don't really need the one or two packages of meat and that they're, they're happy to take the other non-perishable items.
Do you think it's possible that we may have lost some people because they, they know they can't come because they're working?
I truly don't know, like I said, in the time that I've been here, I've not encountered, you know, any, anybody you know, they, I wish we could have come because, you know, we're working, I haven't encountered that.
Do you agree?
A lot of, they sent a lot of chatter about this. I, I wonder if you've ever done a, a survey to the entire, you know, like, the first selectmen's mailing list, the email list, and asked, are you food insecure, and would you, would you have an interest in taking advantage of the food bank? Because I know you have your list, but there are a lot more people on the first selectmen's list that are not on your list.
I have not done a, a full survey that I can think of that went out to the entire town. The most recent one we did was the transportation survey, and we didn't get many responses on that one, but I can definitely, you know, we're happy to consider doing a survey and sending it out townwide and seeing, you know, what the response is.
I think it would be smart, because I, there's a, there's a, a strong feeling in town that there are people who could be helped and that aren't being helped. And it would be nice to have the data.
Okay.
It could be like a one or two-question survey, you know, just trying to capture those, that information.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely work on getting something together.
I know you can use the, the, the list I have for utilization stuff, for some of their, their mailings, emails, and stuff, so, yeah, that's good, that's a good, good idea. A bad idea to update, sort of, anyway. My needs, extra help, doesn't support yet, I guess.
And the other suggestion I have, Samantha, is that there must, I know there's kids on, have free lunch at Kent Center School, and we should make sure that those families also get that information as well. That, that it's a service that, I'm sure the qualifications are very similar.
I have worked with the schools, especially when I first started, making sure that we got out the information that the, that the food bank is open and available.
People's circumstances change too.
Yes, I definitely understand that.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Good stuff to follow up. Always want to be taking, chase things out, redoing, every look, every look, okay. All right, any other questions or commentating, or Samantha?
I'm good, other than to say that it looks like there are some hurdles with scheduling and, and various issues, but, but it's a good idea that we should at least continue exploring.
Great, right, well, thank you, Samantha, appreciate it, thank you for the, the update, okay.
Thank you.
All right, next, I'm sorry. Next is a correspondent, we have a July 3rd email from Jimmy Kay, who is actually James J. Kent, I believe you were on a little bit, a while ago, Mr. Kent, if you're still there. Yeah, how you doing? So I'll read his letter to us, it came down, it says, Kent is a town that is world, has much beauty and as such, it has much to offer. Unfortunately, this town does not have a noise ordinance, many other towns in Connecticut have noise ordinances, we can have neighbors blasting loud music anytime during the day or night, and that would be okay. We also have construction noises coming from our neighbors on a Sunday morning at 7:00 AM, and that would be okay, recycle racing can occur by Mill Pond anytime, day or night. We, the resident, can are completely unprotected in that aspect. We, as the residents and taxpayers, neither we as the government, help preserve the peaceful charm of Kent, instituting a noise ordinance would be a step in the right direction. Please let me know what can be done to improve our town as regarded, it's him, Jimmy Kay, that's James K. Kent, he's been off on Kent Road in South Kent, Connecticut. Shady, come back to us on that. So, we'll, we don't address the, the, as I mentioned to you in our email, I hope we done that, we don't address it directly, we have a discussion on the correspondence, we will discuss potential noise issues later on in my, in my report anyway, and also you have opportunities coming up on we're, public comment on agenda as well as public comments, anything, you have a discussion, so. We do thank you for your letter.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Yes, we have public comment on agenda. We're trying to follow our rules here, any comment on agenda?
Um, yes.
It could be the opportunity, yeah.
Okay, so, um, first selectman Lynn in Meyer, selectwoman Lynn Melis Worthington, selectman Glenn Sanchez. My name is James and I reside in South Kent. I have been very concerned lately about the noise levels in town. I live practically on the border with New Milford. I will give a few examples that Dwight Kent should adopt a noise ordinance. There's a vast forest behind the property, our property, from where I can constantly hear gunshot noises. Many times, me and my family members feel like we need to duck to the ground just out of human instinct from the, the gunshots, that it, it causes fear. My family have been in contact with our previous and our current resident trooper, and they have been very empathetic, but since there is no noise ordinance, there is nothing they can do. We recently learned that there are three shooting ranges behind our house over the New Milford line, and that neighbors are free to practice shooting at any time. We have had situations when the shootings start at 7:00, 9:00, 10:00 PM, midnight, 2:00, or even 3:00 AM, we've been woken up with those gunshot sounds. But according to the New Milford Police, whom we have contacted as well, is perfectly legal. We have a deck where we can enjoy the outdoors, and these gunshot noises ruin the peace and tranquility that we came to look for in this beautiful part of Connecticut. I humbly believe that the Kent, Connecticut State Police Trooper should work in cooperation with the New Milford Police Department, especially in matters involving quality of life issues along the southern border of Kent. Another issue involving noise has to do with either motorcycles or ATVs. The noise comes from the area around Mill Pond. Every afternoon, we hear motorcycles and, and/or ATVs running up and down Kent Road for hours. During weekends, there are also people at Mill Pond that play loud music into the late hours of the night. Also, neighbors tend to use loud machinery like woodcutters on weekends, early in the morning, disrupting our sleep. This is why I believe a noise ordinance should be enacted here in Kent, an ordinance that limits noise only reasonable times during the day. This town is rural, and it is prized for its rustic New England charm. Noise should not ruin Kent's reputation. We should all work together to preserve the peace and tranquility around here. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kent, appreciate your, your comments here.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, um, any other comment, any of your agenda, I have some discussion left. Okay, well.
Yes, at the, at the end of the meeting, can I also use the public comment section?
These, these two minutes usually, and I'm sure you, you. So, absolutely. We have no tax refunds. Yeah, there's still taxes, but coming in, Treasury's report.
So I apologize to people online, I don't have an online version to share. This is basically just a wrap-up of last fiscal year, I am winding the year down, getting very close to closing the books. The very top section of the report tells you how many transactions for the whole fiscal year and the dollar amount associated with those transactions, AP checks, payroll, foreign debt, deposits. The middle of the report gives you an actual versus budget, and I want to point out that this budget presentation on this page is before any budget transfers were posted. Couple of the highlights are investment income, which was expected to exceed, it was its budgeted amount by over $100,000, the community house fees, looks like Joyce has been pretty busy renting that out, and the KCS tuition for out-of-town students exceeded the budgeted amount. Notes on activity, the credit card policy and application are complete, cards are expected to be received in the next week or so. The bi-weekly payroll transition is complete. Of note, we still haven't received any information or revenue for the Medicaid four is the agreement between us and the fire department previous. I did attend USDA grant funding webinar back in the beginning in June, seems like some years ago, and I am starting the fiscal year 24 out. I'm still waiting for one final invoice for the EMS stuffing, and I'm waiting on information from Kent Center School regarding whether they are going to exercise their new right under Public Act 2445 and request a transfer of up to $144,000 to a non-lapsing fund.
So the Medicaid four revenues, that for the whole year?
No, the way they were doing it is they were send, giving me information about six months in arrears, and we haven't received anything since 2022.
Yeah.
And we did mention it to them, we had a meeting recently, it was mentioned.
Yeah, we sit down with them and talk about EMS, their planning, their consideration, and we haven't heard back from them, whether they're actually going to attempt to go with a new EMS staffing company. Did they, okay, for the last, well, we, we did not receive it, by the way, the last we heard was that the board had rejected it. That was when, the 9/4 of that, that was just before, before July, I think, and we talked again together, again, after, one September, we don't, so that, that won't be again. So you're, you're actually.
When you open up my report, the middle section is the actual versus budget today, and this presentation does present the budget transfers that have already been approved, there's been five, and there on the back is, you need to review those. There are still two budget transfers that will need to take place. The paving for Carter Road came in higher than expected, and there wasn't enough left in the DPW budget to cover it, so about a $35,000 or $36,000 budget transfer for that, and we just, I think today or yesterday, got a bill for our CAGA dues for last year, and there wasn't enough budgeted for that. So there will be two more budget transfers forthcoming.
They're, they're kind of, you didn't see an email put, I didn't.
No, and I think what happens is the emails had gone to the first selectmen's email, so maybe it's just buried way back in
That could be.
July of last year, I, I don't know, they didn't come directly, and they don't file documents, so.
Right, they, you know, they can email, essentially the one.
I think it was probably an emergency email, but I'm. Some of the CAGA dues. Twenty, $300? It's $300, but out of that unbudgeted, we also paid for CROG dues, and that's in association with the new software that Land Use and Assessing Office is using.
$500 buy-in to.
Five years of the CROG, which ate into the 22-weeked budget, and then the dues came in at $2,300, so we had a small $700. Now, I remember, I remember you talking about this, but because it's so big with the paving, do we have to go to a town meeting? We did, we did. We're not increasing the budget, we're just moving money around in the budget. If we were to increase the budget.
Anything within the budget, well, I became a little bit. There's all savings. Get together for the sort of, it's more, I think, I saw the final, that was well over 300.
349.
349, yeah.
And was that, was any state funding, that was all lost?
That's all part of ours, the town road, I, I saw you on there, can't write it hybrid, was there any other funding that went into that amount? You're still there?
Yeah, Town aid road is state funding.
Yeah, Town aid road, state.
Yep.
Those are our, our budgets, all right?
Yeah, it's our paving line, the Town aid road, and I don't remember if I used any material line in that also, or hired equipment. So, it was all within the, the operating budget.
Yeah, it wasn't like a special state grant or anything like that.
No, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they had me done by the end of June too, so they got it, you know, the lawyer.
I drove on it, I drove on it last week, it was very nice.
The very back page is just the budget transfers that have already been approved, and then I guess it. And that's all I have.
Can I ask you a?
A state grant question?
Sure. Since you're here and you can't hear me. Is, is it, my recollection is that when a state grant application is made, there can still be changes after it's submitted, like, maybe it doesn't have to be so, so detailed, is that, is that inaccurate?
It depends on the program, they haven't rolled it out yet this year, so I don't know how it's going to change. It depends on the program. They haven't rolled it out yet this year, so I don't know how it's going to change. I know they increased the dollar amount that we can apply for. But I think it depends on the applications and I'm guessing that every, every small town that came is going to be putting an application in. So it's first come, first served. So we need to be ready.
Right.
But I don't think we've ever changed a steep application once we've submitted it. So.
What's your concern? I guess my question is, do you have to have all the details? Because
I know the steep grants are usually pretty vague. That's what I thought.
That's what I remember.
So they don't require, it's not like the federal grants that we're dealing with. You give them a project, a generic type of budget that shows how you're spending the money, what you're putting into it. As long as you come within those parameters.
Yeah. Specifically for the one episode fourteen on the sideline, didn't really say what, you know, type of property it had to be for life. It's just going to be for an overall welcome center bathroom. Because I remember I went back like that.
Yeah, because I, I was like, that took so long. There's no way they knew exactly everything they put in.
And they've extended it, right?
They may have. I don't even remember.
I think there was a question like how to speak slowly because it's a different, uh, thing selection of of the property.
Yeah, that was very. Yeah. Changes.
Yeah, it was. But it needs to keep it, keep it well.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, no, just to say this, Barbara, thank you for your reports and you're always very good about getting this online so people can see. But being, um, being out with the, uh, the public online right now. You know, I just can't see the, uh, I can't see these numbers. So, you know, just, uh, you know, it's, it's nice that the Board of Selectmen have the numbers in front of them, but, um, and I'm just hearing this verbally over here. So, uh, you're always very good about stuff.
Everybody can follow up with the minutes because all of the information I present is always appended to the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Now, thank you for your report.
Awesome.
Was bugging the heck out of Reagan today about other grants today. I wait for her to door when she comes in every day. All right, number nine, new business. Uh, we appoint a deputy farm marshal tonight. Uh, it's going to be Stan McMillan, which doesn't really go away at all. We know that. So, so I have a motion. And I'm, I'm motion to appoint Stan McMillan to serve as the assistant farm marshal at the current rate of twenty five dollars per hour.
Can we discuss that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Do we have another farm, assistant farm marshal?
There is, uh, Tom Osborne was to be assistant farm marshal. I think he's still, they, they serve as long as they.
Okay.
All right. So there's no limit to him. And, um, so, um, and there'll be other ones of his. But yes, Stan is the one that is available on weekends and he's already kind of made an arrangement with, uh, uh, with, with, uh, um, our, our farm marshal. So, so Tim. So, um, yeah, that's, that's good. He's happy to do that. So. Yeah. And there's others, he needs others. There's, you know, it's, it's the budget. It's not specifically, they do it by the, by the hour, whatever they're asked to commit. Any other questions? I'll appear in the motion.
I.
Okay, performance appraisal update in time. So it's going through. I know we're going to dig out that some of the stuff on that and your write up so we can get that online. I think there's a choice and sent you a note on that. But the praise is already go. We've been talking to people. Yeah, anyways, um, so already go. But what we need to do is the worst three sit down and get a date where we can, um, actually sit down and try to figure out how we wanted to apportion, what kind of criteria you want to look at. And we had talked all the different aspects about of of the reports rejected. They had like, so we extended the win, the window so they could go back to twenty two and all the way back through. Because there's a lot of issues that have been done as post COVID as well as longevity. So we just need to sit down and do that. So another thing I'm asking again, uh, it right now is, is to look at a date. If we don't have a date right after that, get a couple of them and can coordinate on the time we get together. Sometime in August, I think. We can do twelve somewhere online. If you can look at your calendar. Hopefully I'll be moved to wherever I'm moving back to that point.
Week of the twelfth one?
Week of the twelfth, uh, will not work for me in none of those days that week.
Okay.
Week of the nineteenth?
That I can do.
Okay.
Pretty much any, any day that works for you two.
Can't do Wednesday because it's pickleball. I stole enough of your pickleball.
No, can't do pick. Yeah, I know. We need to play pickleball.
With the twentieth, uh, work?
Works for me.
Do the twentieth? All right. You want to do earlier in the afternoon?
That works for me.
Okay, four o'clock. All right. Put that up for four o'clock.
So are you going to have any stuff like ideas, drafts?
Yes, oh, yeah. They'll be pushing through. Yeah, I'm looking at stuff on longevity. We've got this paper, you know, like we did for a lot of other things we've done to the forcing objective itself and look at how they do it. It's, it's different. A lot of it doesn't go where we kind of wanted to go, which is not a bonus, but you know, towards the base kind of thing and so on. So, but we'll, we'll go up with some issues also and actually give you a little more. Four things together. I've talked to the, the cost and C C M as well. Their ideas from Connecticut where, and they've got some other things about there. It's a pretty good, they've been really good. All the time they talk to us, hey, do you have any information on this? And they're really good. So, yeah, they're going to give us some, uh, some information too as well. Okay. Um, all right. Now we're kind of moving Swift House update up. So I put, but when I put your, uh, your notes from, um, dude, so selectmen's notes up into that. So if you want to kick off and talk about your notes, sorry, um, that we can get into.
That's good. I'll, I'll kick off. Um, so, so, yeah, the Swift House Task Force, uh, we have not met since our last meeting, uh, on, uh, on June twenty sixth. Uh, there's just been vacation and various, various issues. So we have not met. Uh, but, um, but I just, uh, want to throw out a few questions, um, which are, which are here, uh, in my reports. Um, and I'll just read it. It's short. Uh, now that the Board of Selectmen has decided to pursue a steep grant of five hundred thousand dollars for renovations to the Swift House, our meeting on July first, how does that impact the current charge of the Swift House Task Force? So so just to, you know, give a, a brief history of this, um, you know, ever, even before I was a selectman of, uh, there was the Swift House Task Force uh, first, uh, iterations. Zane can tell you about that. Um, but, uh, but then we, we also amended the charge, uh, but certainly that charge, um, of the, of the first Swift House, uh, Task Force was to explore future possibilities of the use of the building. Um, and, um, and that's, you know, and we met time and time again. Uh, but, uh, but that seems to have come to an end, uh, at our meeting on July first. Uh, we actually have a future use of this building that we agreed on. So, um, to throw that out. Um, then on our meeting on, um, our regular meeting on, uh, on, on May twenty second, we talked about getting quotes for the A D A entryway and restroom. We talked about getting uh, getting some of that moving. Um, that was in May. Uh, and then at some point I couldn't find it in the notes, uh, for number three there, but we talked about prioritizing, uh, use of the remaining operating funds for this fiscal year, for the last fiscal year. Um, and, um, and, and Zan, uh, Zan found a painter and, uh, folks painted in there and, um, looks great, actually. So, so we did that. And then number four, um, you know, on, on our, our June twenty sixth meeting, we talked about how, um, in the Board of Selectmen here, that the Swift House Task Force by August fifteenth would meet with certain focus groups to see who would be interested in using the building so that we would bring this to some kind of, um, uh, town hearing, uh, or at least having more information for the town. Um, so we haven't done that and there hasn't been much talk about that. And I don't even know if we need to do that at this point. Um, maybe we still do, but, um, but certainly we have to talk about the timeline because TikTok. So, um, so I guess my overarching question for all of this is moving forward. Um, if the Swift House Task Force, uh, is to remain in the field here, uh, what is it, what, what should it focus on? Uh, what, what is its current charge, uh, now that we've decided to go for a steep grant of a half million dollars? So I, I guess that's my, that's my report in general, and I want to know what you two think about all of this.
Well, um, I and I, and I saw this, this is some good, very good questions. And, and we went back, I went back, looked a lot of the stuff, make sure that we were as honest as we can. And the thing was uh, the A D entryway restrooms and, and that has kind of morphed into what we still need to do to find the, the, the correct way to utilize that is we go into a steep grant. That would be a part of that as well. Uh, the engineers would come in and the architect, whoever would be on that building to convert that to what we wanted to do with social services. Um, and to get to Zan's, uh, her input, um, a couple of things for that. But, um, so all I think some of that would be answered. It's certainly the report, uh, still to go on to have people, uh, come into the, uh, the Swift House to take a look around and see what else they might be able to use it for. Because still they're, they're even with, uh, what would be the plan, steep grant, uh, grant focused on bringing social services in and, and this point to the, you know, other social services programs in that building, um, there's still needs to have orientations come in and get a chance to see what they could do, looking into space, seeing, you know, hey, that'd be great for this, that activity. Um, some of the things that had been brought up by, by you all and by all of us in general. So I think you still have that charge to, to finish up in, you know, for sure. And I, and I, and I think that's probably going to be very, very good information. So, um, at that point, uh, to be honest with you, my view is that the Swift House Task Force has served its purpose at that point. It doesn't mean that we can't continue to get input from Zan or others that have an interest in, in a history with the program. So hold on a second. So, um, but, um, certainly we're moving towards other, uh, inputs and other focuses. Um, I think for the building itself is we get to a steep grant. So, um, I think it's, uh, you know, really, if you look at what the charge has been and what, what the, the task force is supposed to do, um, my mind, anybody's given us pretty much a ninety five percent focus forward. And so, and so, um, but I'll stop there for a second. Let anyone else have any comments to take out.
Uh, if I could say one more thing, I did not put this down either. Um, but, um, again, I haven't heard from Shippo, uh, and Marina Wosniewski, um, but there's still that possibility of state and federal, um, uh, you know, getting the, the, the building on the registry. Um, so you know, so, so, so there's that. I don't know how, how that uh, fits into all of this. Um, but, uh, I'm assuming we still want to pursue that. Uh, maybe we don't. Uh, I don't know. Uh, so, um, I throw that out to the group.
We do.
But we have to do it concurrently. This is a board of selectmen's discussion and now Zan will continue in a minute please. Um, that we still, yes, that was something that we, we got into, we all got behind, and I think we'll continue. But again, as we get into timelines, I don't know which, you know, timelines they have. If the steep grant comes in and we need to move forward with that, then it's not under any kind of historical requirement for us to have to cert, hit certain milestones with building structure. So I think we'd like to do that. And I think that that will, will continue to try to keep that um, in mind, the historical significance, the structure, you know, we don't like anything, we never want to do anything to the front. I think God reading that, there is a lot of benefit to having that, that building, um, you know, made in its historical perspective. So, um, but but if we have to move the steep grant forward, then we have to move the steep grant forward.
Okay. All right. Now, good. I just, yeah, I just didn't know the, the, the place for that. So what, whatever may or may not happen to the task force, uh, we're still going to pursue.
Yeah, all the things that, yeah, I, I think all the things that you can agree to in, in the past, we'll, you know, certainly keep that going. But, um, we had that opportunity for the steep grant and we certainly don't want that to, to linger. You know, we're going to have to get out of that.
Sure.
Maybe, maybe, maybe the fact that we are applying for a steep grant will put a little added pressure on them to get the report done. There's no reason they shouldn't, they should have given us the report by now.
That is true. Okay. That's good to know.
Um, in my opinion is I, um, I, I think it, I agree with you that I think it's a great idea to have have input from different groups that have an interest in using the building. That's not going to hurt anything. I, I think we might want to give them a little bit of leeway since there were vacations and stuff maybe in the offices. I don't think it's going to impact the steep grant.
No, in that sense, no, I don't, that, I agree. It, it was just, we, we decided to go as soon as we could to get people in there, uh, based on the timelines for people to be able to take that on as, you know, as far as tours and so on. So, but, yeah, we can extend. I don't think that's going to make a difference. It'll, it'll help us actually probably.
And I, I also believe that the, the task force, once they finish that project, it may not be needed. But I do think that one of the best things about the task force is it has sort of raised the level of awareness and, um, I, I don't know if we can maybe put some, maybe if Joyce would work with us and, and put something together about what are the annual maintenance tasks that need to be done in that building, get it written down. So, you know, we, we do a better job of keeping, yeah, keep taking care of it because we don't want to fall into.
No, exactly. And I think again, and, and, um, and Zan, give me a minute and I'll give you some time, um, for sure. But, um, the folks that have worked on this have diligent in trying to get the whole thing looked at and, and saved it. And, and I certainly, as I said before, you know, I may have not totally agreed with or felt the, the same vision in that, but I do agree that if we can utilize this building, uh, in, in the way that we're looking to do that, that deserves all the attention in the maintenance to make sure it saves it, you know, while troubling around for social services volunteer. So, yeah, definitely. Okay, Zan, you have two minutes.
Okay. One of the things I wanted to say is I think it is important that we follow through on the national application because that would allow now and in the future, that would allow the town to apply for uh, historic grants from the federal government to match anything that we might ask the state for. Because there are a lot of historic grants in the state that require matching funds. And if we can't get them from the federal government, that they have to come from the town. Uh, so I think we should pursue that. My other good and concerns about, um, moving the uh, social services and the, the food pantry, I, I put in my letter to the, the three of you. Um, I am very concerned about the, and now I learned from Samantha in this meeting tonight that there are two freezers and there's a walk-in freezer and I mean, there's just too much weight bearing, uh, equipment that's a part of the food pantry to be able to house that in the back of the building as it now exists. So I put a couple of suggestions in my letter to you, one of which is it would be ideal if it could be relocated to the vacant unused former ambulance garage that already has a concrete pad. And, you know, is just steps away from where the new so, social services offices would be. And that might allow it to be open other hours. You know, whether it's manned by volunteers or the intern from social services or whatever. You know, that's their business, but it could be separate and apart from the offices. But having looked at the structure and having talked to the architects, uh, about it, you really need to consult with a structural engineer if you have any interest in continuing to pursue putting it in the building. Because the building as it exists now won't be able to handle it.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah. And the other thing that I want, that I didn't say in my letter, but wanted to mention when, when the planning is done for what will be included in the steep grant, I think it would be really helpful and financially advisable if you were to include, um, code, uh, compliant stairs to the second floor. I'm, I'm not suggesting that anything be done to the second floor now. But if you're going to put offices on the first floor and people are going to work there on a regular basis, then you don't want to disrupt their work to tear the petitions apart to widen the stairs to the second floor after they've already moved in and started working there. Uh, it would be much better to do that work while, while the A D A accessibility is being done and petitions are being adjusted here and there. So, and also in doing that, to have the architects take into consideration. So, a- and also in doing that, to have the architects take into consideration where there need to be pipe chases and. Air conditioning and and air ducts. To event, for eventual use on the second floor and on the ground floor. So that should be a part of the the planning process, too. I mean, I don't know what the. Factors are about possibility of using the ambulance, um, the ambulance garage, but. Is that something that you've looked into that you're considering? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I'm not gonna get into that right now, first off, because that's not part of the task force's responsibility is to look outside that.
Okay.
Secondly, and I appreciate your letter as a citizen. But you put in there, you're the chair, it's a task force and so on, and you haven't had a meeting for you to even have this discussion with your other board members, so.
No, I'm, I was writing it on my own behalf.
Well, you signed it as a chair of the task force, and it wasn't Zan Charity Citizen, you know, concerned, it was Swift House Task Force Chair. Um, and so first off, it can't come into us. I did not accept it and will not accept it as uh anything from the task force, because you didn't have a test of. You can't come up with something that you signed with the task force without having a meeting with your peers, uh, with Glenn and with anything else, so, but I do appreciate.
Well, Glenn was not available. I I had hoped to do that. I tried very hard to do that, but he will tell him that.
That's irrelevant at this point.
It is irrelevant, because you are under, you're under all the FOIA, all the requirements of a meeting that we have to do, Zan, so I'm accepting it as a citizen. A concerned citizen, interested citizen, so I would take it under consideration that way, but we cannot have a discussion about the actual. Information that you think it's it's good information, we'll take into consideration, because I know you're concerned, I know you've been there, you have good. Some good insight into it, but we have to kind of hold off there on discussion about any of the specifics of that letter, and we will do that. Uh, I think as we get into where we're going with the steep grant and all that stuff, because it's really outside the scope of what we can do with it right now, so. Um, anyway, um, okay, so having said that and appreciate Zan, your comments, um, I do, um. Um, is there anything other on the Swift House update right now? Taking consideration all the the national, the state level, Shippo and national historical. Pieces to it, um, consideration obviously for what is going to be. Done in this deep grant and make sure that we're structurally sounding, or whatever we do, obviously, we have to make sure that's all done. And um, that we, it it wouldn't possible to look at what we can do to set up for any future uses of the building itself, which again. Zan did bring up, which is 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 a is a good point, so. Um. This plan. And if we need to extend, I mean, I'm not gonna hold anybody to the fifteenth of August, if we need to go into the first of September, first of October, absolutely. Because again, we don't seem to be hitting, I kind of want to, you know, we thought we hit a deadline in July for certain steep grant, but it hasn't finished, so. Okay.
Is is there any future, is there any further information about what the dates might be for the grant, or it just hasn't been announced yet?
It's been announced, though. I don't know the framework. If we assume it's gonna be in September, we just don't know when to bring it in.
Well, if i- in any way that we can be helpful, we're very anxious to do that. You know, everybody on the committee has an intimate knowledge of the building. We've spent a lot of time there and put a lot of thought into it, and um, we'd like to be helpful in the process. And, you know, I do hope, I do hope that you will get in touch with a structural engineer to advise on.
Absolutely.
On the those factors.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
It'll definitely be okay with me if you just take my letter as a interested citizen, uh, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, no, we have that, we've definitely, that's okay. Anything else for the board?
But just to say, um, thank you, Marty and Lynn, I mean, thank you for your support with all of this, uh, you know, th- there was. Serious movement on this. I've been on this committee for a while, and I want to thank both of you, and I want to thank members of the committee here. We still have some work to do. Uh, let's meet when we can, and we'll uh, we'll try to get this focus group thing going, and we'll try to get a report. Uh, to the Board of Selectmen, certainly by, certainly by. Uh, I would say the end of September, uh, is probably, if it's okay with you two, um, if that's, if that's fine, uh, you know, so if we can, if we can do it by the, by the beginning of the next meeting, that'll be great, uh, but it'll certainly be. Soon thereafter, if that's okay.
Oh, what?
Just assuming that we're gonna have.
Are you talking about, I'm sorry.
Please, Zan, Zan. With all due respect to you, you're not giving us respect. Please, this is a board of selected business meeting, it's not a Swift House Task Force meeting anymore. So we've had your input, I appreciate it, but I need the board to be able to have the discussion and move on, so thank you, Zan. Um, Glenn, I would not, I just don't want to push it too far into September, um, you know, all right, just because if the steep comes in, I don't want to be. You know, I mean, having to shortchange anyone, so if they think they're gonna go in the twenties of September, so they can't even, you know, the people coming in, um, whenever they can, for sure, but just to, you know. We'll we'll just keep it into the first part of September.
Let's, let's say this, let's, uh, I mean, our next meeting is August, our next regular meeting is August twenty-eighth, it seems, so, uh, that that will. If it's okay with you two, that shall be our date. I'll I'll try to make that happen.
That would work for me.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, appreciate it. So. Okay, risen trip report, she's good, she's um visiting her mother right now in Hampshire, uh, she's done, again, so a great job, so.
I gotta say, I could not believe she went in the dometag.
Yeah.
Full uniform on.
She said she had.
She went above and beyond.
She did, yeah, that was a good one. I should have used her shoes, that'd be easy. Or something, actually, no, it was good, that was a, that was amazing. She, yeah, she was excited about doing that, and she's got fundraising coming up on the weekend, uh, as well, um. In Torrenton for the back-to-school things and stuff online with that. But, yeah, she's doing a great job with with the back-to-school thing, they actually emptied that little thing in front of them, I don't know, like, two, three times.
Oh, wow, that's cool.
Okay, um, all right, um, selecting reports, um. Do you like to leave it so much?
Yeah, so we had a meeting today of the broadband committee, and some things came up that I would love to bounce off of you two. Um, one of our new initiatives is we want to, we're coming up with a communication strategy. To explain to people why fiber optic is important. So a lot of people don't really understand the difference between fiber optic and regular cable, coax cables. So we wanna try to. We wanna have, yeah, we wanna educate people, so, um. What I'm wondering is, and we wanna like get some volunteers to help us with this. Do you guys think there's any issue of just having like a volunteer task force or some kind of working group that works with the broadband committee? That's what I'm wondering about, is I don't want to get us into trouble.
Right, and and it did look, because I was listening to you when I was going to work today, a- and and I just thought, okay, what can we have some. Working groups and working groups. Now, what you had proposed before when you were gonna go into the homes and get some volunteers up doing that, I think that's still okay. So if you're looking to do task force for education or.
Well, it's basically, basically to help us develop materials. They would come back to the broadband committee, but, um.
Still work with the community or just work with?
Work with the committee as well.
The committee.
Basically, like sending our, to have more volunteers.
They're gonna be gathering information that you're then gonna use to then present.
Kind of research. Research group for.
I think that they're still part of your committee, or they would need to be.
Yeah, they would be supporting any subject, yeah.
Still recorded to me, you know, because that's information that's being gathered and discussed and.
They can, if they bring it, I think it would obviously be a meeting, you know, when they would come and talk to you, I don't like.
Well, yeah, yeah, what I'm wondering is.
Are they independent on their own, or is it?
Yeah, like if they, but if they, if there was like a group of people that met. Then it would become a subcommittee.
I know. Um, yeah, I, I know, I know, it does, but it it's all they have, all they have to do is, you know, follow like video and all that kind of stuff, what they do and how you're recording, whatever the topic we have.
Quorum. I don't know, I mean, maybe. Maybe if they can only meet in like, no more than like two people at a time or something.
Discussing it, though, still.
But it's a quorum. The FOI is, it's a quorum.
I just, like, number one, your subcommittee doesn't have the charge and the ability to create said group.
That's my.
Right, I know, but I'm saying, so even if they, even if the board of selectmen, you'd have to decide what is a quorum. And and there's that that old question, I understand that FOI is a quorum, but if two people are still meeting that are on the committee. And they're gathering information that's gonna be used to make a decision later, that still constitutes a meeting.
Even if there's no quorum?
Remember we had that discussion when the gentleman was here, we asked that very question? Because you're still talking about that core subject. That's going to then dictate a decision made by the, either the subcommittee or the original committee or the board of selectmen, so it's.
We can go back and ask, again, if there was, if there's a research group or something that. You know, might be, so, oh, we have to do that, but I know that under, it would sound like that, and you have a media. And that's, you know, if they have a charter and so on, and that will have to be at least recorded. If it's a, if it's a, or a beauty person group, or a free person group. One person, we love it, we have two guys, but when you start getting a group, we can find it, we can ask for it, see if they can, uh.
This is why some towns haven't done a town broadband committee.
I'm sure, and we're only one to share.
We share, it's not the town agency.
No, I know it is, and it's, it's what I'm, that's it, exactly, and they had a ton of people.
It's like, I know why.
All different things, you're right, and that's part of why, just trying to get others, you know, to get more help outside of government, because I don't expect them. Okay, to follow these specific, but we can ask if, I mean, I have people to talk to.
I mean, at this point, if there's no volunteers, you're not part of. You're not a subcommittee at this, I mean, technically, if if you don't make them a subcommittee, they're just volunteers who came and gave you information, then they're just, they're different than general public coming here and giving to you guys information, so.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
If you don't technically make that like a subcommittee or a working group or whatever, they're just volunteers.
Um, tiers.
That's.
Or just go on their own and, you know, find information and then say, hey, you know.
But see, the thing is, is that we're trying to create a whole, like, communication strategy.
It's rather ongoing and regular basis, I see, for people.
Yeah, we're trying to come up with a plan of how to make the message. Which also, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, I think, I knew at one point you were talking about a social media policy.
Yeah, yeah, we were talking.
So, this, you know, the broadband committee would like to do, like, have its own. Facebook page.
Hmm.
And Instagram and all that, to be able to share the word about this, they'd like to be able to. Call some meetings and have people talk about specific topics, experts and that kind of thing, so.
Hmm, hmm.
We'd like to be able to promote things, so we need to know what are the guidelines, what are the guardrails that, um, that the town wants to actually help with.
Right, right. Uh, just was reading up on a one, a ten part, and just literally, it was a free, I mean, you, you were just talking about, um. Exactly that, uh. Government official talking on their personal side on a, on their town Facebook page, or talking town business on their personal page and so on. And they got a big thing, and it's, I call CCM and COST yesterday and today, and we're actually gonna do a webinar. Because of it, they said it's a great idea that we talk more about how we do those things, how do we actually engage in. There also, uh, Betsy Gere from, uh, uh, the COST, um. Is sending me a bunch of of examples of social media policy, and they have to, because of this thing now, everybody's looking at it, the lawyers are all, we gotta look at it, so. CCM lawyers that think we're these cost layers are gonna try to, you gotta give us more of a webinar. Now, it's not right immediate, um, but we can, uh. You know, we can find out what we do, but yeah, we're proposing that, as part of our whole cybersecurity initiative is actually to do, they'll have social media policies, that is one.
And I think there's also just internal stuff like, you know, like Joyce brought up to me, it's like. If if there's a department that has a social or commission that has a social media page, then. When is it appropriate for them to share with the town's page, you know?
Right, exactly.
And that kind of thing, and and who are the people who, just so internally, people know, who are the ones who have access to, who are the administrators for that page and that kind of thing.
And rights of partisan, of course, they're only in very difficult states, clerk has been taking on that role. Isn't always a town clerk. We may need to look at, along with cyber and other stuff, actually outsourcing per se, but getting some outside assistance, so that it's not. Don't have someone, a town clerk, who's got other responsibilities to do, but is trying to do the best and 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 professionalize a little bit more. Not that she, you know, that clerk isn't doing a great job, but, um, you know, we kind of throw a lot of things out, and that was one of the concerns that Darlene and I have had, and we're meeting tomorrow again to. To kind of talk through some of the stuff, so, um, but yeah, we need to, um, formalize that.
Yeah, and one thing, uh, when I, in my previous life, um. Places like these schools, the independent schools, they they sometimes require that if you have a page that's associated with the organization. You then have to share the login information, so it's not just like one person, so if the one person leaves, then you lose access to that page, so.
Exactly. Right, exactly. Yeah, yeah, I've been universities then to do that, and and they actually took over control for a little while, which really pummeled up, because some of them are disinterested, you know, what they're doing.
Yeah, right.
But you're right, so that you can't leave that hanging. That's part of what we're, the issue with right now, as we switched over, I mean. Dean did a good job turning over a lot of that to me, but it took me a while to actually figure out where everything was and and even how to write all the newsletters and stuff like that, just, you know, taking a while. Kind of going into hiatus for a while, but yeah, and, uh, yeah, so. We're 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 gonna, yeah, but yeah, I think we'll be able to get some things going here pretty quick. Uh, so that, uh, Betsy Gere from CCM, I cost, she was just sending some stuff to me, um. So, social media and the content for for development, had CCM, is Mel Alex of Poland, who's taken anything else I call. I called the system.
That doesn't give you one.
No, I did, I called the system, but, but yeah, we're working on it, it's something that's that maybe, that certainly our talent is to pick it up to, uh, to speed on that. I know that Milford's had some issues. As well with people going back on their own and not having things coordinated, so we don't want that to happen. So far, it's been pretty good with what we sent out. We do send a lot of emails out, yeah, but. I mean, it always affects it, it's always a question.
Social media is definitely a difference.
Yeah, it is.
Um. So I just, um, I wanted to circle back, and I didn't put this in my report, but verbally, I just wanted to circle back to. Um, thank you for this transfer station stuff that you put in your report, but I do wonder if maybe next month, we could. Ask Rick for a little bit more detail about. You know, where we at. I I did have a question about your numbers, um, I don't have it in front of me, but, um.
Right.
Like, this forty-three bags only, is that included?
Including, yeah, yes.
So, meaning they bought extra bags?
Um, right. Um, well, that was the.
Because people can't just buy bags without permit.
No, not permit, right, the only thing they can do is.
No.
We've already come where some people have bought a permit, and then they realize that they need additional bags, or some people have come back to buy just bags, but they would have a permit.
Yeah.
And and there were some, right, and there and there have been some people that bought tags that had a whole bunch of the orange bag left over, and they said, I'll get them later, okay.
Right, right.
Wish you were in company.
Because we don't believe they can use that so much.
Oh, definitely, it's been, it's been for, that way. But, yeah, those are some numbers, and actually, pretty good, um, you know, last year, there was a little bit more at the beginning, but, um. As Rick said, we always have extras coming in, one or two came in today, so, yeah.
That's good, I'm glad it didn't drop a lot.
Actually. Oh, no, no, I think most people understand that, or, you know, they're getting to understand it, and in your comment today, you know, about what's on social media, uh, you know. I don't like to look at it as like a treatment.
No, no, I just, I I just look at it as, it's information. I'm totally with you not to, I do not want to comment on social media. The only comment I said is, please ask people at the transfer station, they are the experts, um.
Yeah.
Uh, but I do think if people, if something keeps surfacing on social media, then I think it's okay for us to say, hey, this is the data.
Hmm. Yeah.
You know, this is how much money it costs. We're not making money on the transfer station, we're losing money.
Yeah, no. We're making less money, but, exactly.
I mean, the fact that people out there think we're making money off of them is just blows me away.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I mean, in this month, um, losing a commitment in August, we'll address a little bit of that at the beginning, you know, it's kind of, it's, yeah.
Can you just give people the numbers and say, this is how much it costs to run a transfer station, this is how much we provide.
We went through the. Yeah, we went through it, pretty much as we looked at all the numbers.
We did, but we hadn't, it wasn't part of like the information that went out.
But, yeah.
You know, with the bags and permits, I mean, I I know you speak why, but this is the weird places people go with this stuff.
Right, I didn't.
This is a funny chat.
No, okay, no, no. No, we'll, we'll address that, and that would be great, so.
Okay, um, and months ago, we talked about data from, can't go into a party park, like, we talked about, you know.
Yeah.
So I I think we need to circle back to them, and, you know, how many high watch calls do they have? And I think we need to have more than just like this year. I think it'd be, multiple years would be helpful. Um, and how much, how much have they collected from billing?
Hmm.
Like five years worth? I mean, they've been doing it now for a while. Um, they're very, they want to keep this stuff close to the chest, but they need to be more transparent, you know, and. And I don't know if they can get this granular, but it'd be really interesting to see the high watch calls. Billing, hold that. I know they bill, I understand that.
Yeah.
Um, but I just want to make sure that. The taxpayers are not, they're not paying for. Um, but I just want to make sure that the taxpayers are not, they're not paying for high watch, you know? And it would be nice to have the data to be able to be reassured that, um.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. And we had, when we talked to, Barbara and I talked to him like the beginning of July or in June, right after, I think it was our meeting, um, we said, no, they hit a lot of different things. And they went back and simply get back to us and, and they asked for the summer. And we said, okay, September, but early September, so we can have it together. And we have, and these are all meetings in person, not just, you know, grabbing one at a time, we set up a phone call and it's actually sitting down. Because there's a lot of things, and that was more of the issues that, um, that we see. And when, when we sit down and they discuss the new EMS, uh, you know, the EMS program, and a whole new co- company coming in and and trying to fix some of the issues that they claim they had with the old company. And then they said, well, but our executive committee didn't approve it enough to pass, we have the membership, it was supposed to be that night or beginning, so it was beginning July. And then not to tell us if they got past it, you know, not even to let us know officially. That, that is.
Yeah, I mean, an email went out saying there's new people. This is why.
Yeah, and I understand going to the membership, but, but also, we're part of that. I mean, it was a code, they did.
I'm with you.
Hit with, uh, they had, they asked me to come to a membership committee meeting, and I didn't really understand what that staffing committee should be, as a Sunday night, eight o'clock. I remember I was someplace, I didn't realize what task force, like preliminary discussions. I mean, I never got, I never came back. Now, I mean, I should have gone to them and said, what exactly did you mean by that? Why would you, what was, that was the agenda, isn't it? Just make it eight bucks or something. No, um, but, um, but we did talk about that as well, that we need to get agents of the, because there's a, an increased cost associated to that.
The new contract.
Significant, from what, if the numbers are still the ones we saw. So that was our, and that's why we said, we need to see your books before, um, ready to commit to going to almost four hundred thousand dollars. Three twenty this year, and if you're six, whatever you're done, then we're getting close to four hundred thousand. It's a whole department. I mean, that's, we, you know, and, and understand that they support each other and that's great, but we don't, to what extent we support it, you know, that's the point we were trying to catch.
Meaning you don't even have the mutual aid policies?
No, no, we have to call, I mean, we call, we don't know like when, when costs come in, when, when payment comes in, where does that go? So, you know, that, or we did that, money, exactly, we're trying to keep it functional.
And I think it's also, it's also important to have what, what Barbara was talking about with the medic fork. You gotta know, how, you gotta have both sides, like, you gotta know how many medic forks also are worth, how many, how much money came in from those. And that's, that's unacceptable that they haven't given us money since twenty twenty-two. That's just not acceptable.
Yeah, that's.
You know?
Exactly, we're gonna.
It's just bad faith, what they're doing.
Well, thank you very much, it's gonna be one.
Alright, um.
Did you have anything else, Glenn? Your report's starting.
Yeah, did you want to, before we get to, uh.
I'm okay, I'm good.
In there for a little while. Alright, um, let me go quickly through mine. Uh, I think a lot of the, uh, the things with paychecks update and credit cards are, are there, we're gonna we're, we're netting up, so that's, that's good. Uh, merchant management, I do have a couple of names. I'm having a meeting with Mercer, Key, Torey. Interesting, um, so we'll see what it was that. So, uh, but they did a great job, Mike and Eric during that storm, they stood up, we stood up, but they were the ones running it, I just kind of ran around. But they did, so, um, the traffic control thing, as I said before, uh, Washington has it now, we're gonna get it, in the next week, it'll be back for two weeks, and we run it on the road if we're interested again. And, uh, so they've improved their data collection as well. So, uh, streetscape two, working back on easement.
Thank you for that detail.
Yeah, yeah. Um, had a great meeting with Marie Horn, we went through, I think, the, this is the, the issues that we discussed, um, and, um, and, and I would, had more time, I'll talk to you about the governor's trip to Germany and, and my comments to him, we should bring him here. Now, really, if you look at, if you guys have traveled, you know, you see pictures, this is very much like the Black Forest area, um, beautiful, you know, not in the middle of everything, a nice place where people live, a place to open a, you know, software company or something, or software, so on. Um, let's see, uh, Skeetico Tribal Nation, Chi Foki came by, uh, they petitioned again, and it looks like maybe some movement on that, so we're watching that very closely. I called, yeah, I know, Perkins Coie, I called her lawyer, Jen McLean down in, in Washington, and she's with, along with that kid at school, we're looking at. Um, I think I mentioned to you guys. Uh, CN Fiber, um, they did the preliminary a couple of days ago, like, at the beginning of July, um, could be another, a couple of trips, another four months or so. The CBRS voting connection, uh, the guy submitted yesterday, um, bringing it across in the same thing. And it's funny because I talked to the government, government, said, how come CEN and, and CBRS and Cybersecurity aren't together, bringing same fiber? You know, you can, a couple of your fiber has to be dedicated fiber, bring it in, so. They got turned down, so, uh, anyway, but we're gonna, plenty of fiber working in here once we get here, and, uh, the connectivity for CBRS will come into this room and then up into the register voters for early voting, which they have a lot of, yeah. Um, and just reminders on said early voting, with thirteenth of August, still have the resolution and the boards that we take off our very days. If, if.
We never dealt with that.
We never dealt with. So my quick recommendation on that is, let's, like, get through the diselection season, kind of clear it out. Because if we're gonna do the fourteen days of early voting, kind of takes off the whole idea that primary, we can't, you know, we have big concern, obviously, make sure there is no politic going on in the process, but you know, we don't do it when we have early voting, you know, close the offices down. Voting, so that time was back when they thought it was more controversial and this, but still there, we haven't cleared it out, but. Let, yeah, so let's let it roll, let, let it through here, see how it is and then.
But we're not, the early voting of around in October and November, will be open.
Yes, we'll, we'll be open for all the early, all the early voting, August one coming up, in a couple of weeks, uh, we'll be open for that as well, but it's the actual primary day and the books to post. I, I think we all agree, we want to clear that off. We'll see this. Um, CPRS security grant, within the middle of that, Darlene and I are meeting tomorrow morning to go over some of that, I've talked to Barbara already. We'll be filling in this twenty-eight page workbook, actually it's not that much, but there is a lot of workbooks, a lot of search each week. And, uh, we, we work with everybody in attendance, we get some numbers, about twenty thousand dollars in, in change, we'll look to put into the grant. And that'll, you know, get us to some place. And then the, uh, Nebbing Grant is, uh, coming back again, remember they could, would only go to Waller Road, it would come to Kent, like, second phase now, fifteen weekend. Or you can go anywhere off of, within one mile of, outside. So I talked to the Conservation, we talked to Gene and Melissa Chineski today, uh, who are co-chairs of the Conservation Commission that do that, and I really asked them to take a look at, um, a, where we would site the, if we get this, where we would site the electric vehicle. It's, right now, it's still the, the two stations with four total hookups. That's still, I believe the, you know, the criteria from the last Nebby, like, change. So, uh, they, you know, I gave you some suggestions, but, you know, they're gonna kind of look at the, well, centers, and, but I really, really love the Conservation Commission YD, has been a lot of work in their data. Uh, the Commission that helped us as well, um, to really take a look at that, so, and so, so, uh, kind of ask them to take a look back, get it back to us, and then we'll go through it and, and work on that too.
We'll get two.
We would get, we could, we could ask for a couple. I mean, we'll see what we, we actually do when we have to look at whatever numbers we have. And I know that Wendy had a whole bunch of numbers before of electric vehicles, and we had to get that out, that's responsible. But updating all that kind of stuff, I assume, for like, should we add power? Because, you know, let us, let's keep coming up anytime, you know, kind of, you know, cybersecurity, kind of. Anyway, uh, but yeah, so there's one problem with that. There's also a, I didn't put it in there, but there's a brownfield, uh, we talked to Melissa about that a little bit today. Great, to look at Brownfield again, and I went to that conference in, in Hartford a couple of weeks ago, um, you know, there's some things we're gonna want to add, see what we can do on that one. But I don't know if we're gonna, there's always gonna be a second round. It's like the cybersecurity, we're in twenty-two, cybersecurity is a new twenty, thirty-one that'll come out, I think, like six months. So we're always gonna be able to get back at it, and I think at least, what I'm hearing from folks from the, from Connecticut and Hartford is that there's it, it demos, that it's not a one-shot, we'll be able to pass it through.
And is the only brownfield we have, versus the old, versus transport.
Yeah, which is a piece to ease, they're gonna get solved, and what they did is they dipped in, you know, the motors to get motors up, you know, to clean them off and get them ready and then redo them all, and then they just dumped this fuck it up. Look, drink any water on that, just like yourself. Anyway, um, that's it from me in a nutshell. So, back down to I think, um, public comments. If you can, you're back in again, I, you had a comment, um, you want to follow up?
Yes.
Oh, uh, yes, uh, well, alright, just to finish up and then before, like, to kind of feed you, because I did send you an email saying what I was gonna be dealing with in my report, um. We do have the new state law that allows, uh, an ideology, uh, captured for cameras, and, and I don't, haven't been able to read the whole, the whole law, what it is, yeah, if it's like, uh, 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 Jim said asking about, is noise ordinance overall, it will be an ordinance, we have to do, to do noise as well as speed cameras. So, um, we'll, we'll look at that. Like, the companies that have dealt with speed cameras are dealing with the noise thing, so I haven't really known.
Another source.
Yeah, we'll go to cost, I, I have got, yeah, I see, um, Karen having to spunter about that, yeah. Anyway, so go ahead, sir.
Okay, alright, so I would like to discuss, uh, an issue that is quite important. I believe that we must all look out for the well-being of our wildlife in town. When I drive around on South Kent Road, I am very saddened to see dead animals like squirrels, raccoons, and other wildlife, uh, dead on the road. The bears in town are roaming around injured, lame and starving. Many have mange. I have even seen turkey vultures on the road with limbs mutilated by the jaw trap. I think those traps ought to be banned, they are very barbaric. Animals should not be treated like this in a first world country. I propose, I propose the following. I believe that signs should be posted on our roadways encouraging drivers to be mindful of wildlife. I think that this would be probably better than ticketing people for going fast. You know, and I don't really think ticketing is a good idea personally. Um, and rehabilitation of, and as for the bears, the rehabilitation of bears is not allowed in Connecticut, as per deep. Maybe that's something you guys could talk to, uh, Representative Maria Horn about. But, um, talking about bears, and I, I think it's inhumane to just put injured animals to sleep, like, uh, we spoke to Deep about, uh, a bear that we saw in town, and they said that they would just put him, put him to sleep, euthanize him. I mean, there has to be reasonable effort to rehabilitate, rehabilitate them. Um, before deciding to euthanize them, only if after reasonable effort it doesn't work. Our youth should be taught to value wildlife in our schools. And, um, my family always taught me to respect life and wildlife especially, because life in all its forms is precious. If wildlife is part of our ecosystem, why aren't we there for them in their time of need? I think a portion of our tax dollars should be allocated to helping our wildlife. They are living beings as well. And those are my comments for tonight.
Great, well, we, we thank you for your talents, uh, appreciate your, appreciate your patience going through all this to, to be able to, to get to the comment tonight, so.
Thanks.
Great, great, um, since that's the last thing in our agenda, is there anything else? If not, I'll chain a motion for adjournment. I'll second that. I'll pay right.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.